To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rope.
Alderman Jean Francois.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ramkisun.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Quorum is present.
I'm here too.
Alderman Tobin is power.
Correspondents.
None this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Paul Brower and I represent the Shawangunk Fish and Game Club, and I'm a lifelong resident of Middletown, New York. We have a memorandum of understanding with the city that was brought by Mr. Green here, and it went, flew without any opposition. It was a very simple memorandum of understanding where we were going to make use of the training facilities specifically for Middletown Police Department, which we have established and built their specifications, and will continue to modify that as per the directives of the department. There was one little piece of language on this memorandum of understanding that has hurt our facility, and historically, for years, Middletown has come through with the plow and made the circle to the roll-off dumpster and picked up the dumps, picked up the waste for us. And when we put the gate in, which the city heroically established that, put the gate up so we couldn't have trespassers and people coming in there when we're, when we're training or utilizing a facility, it was, now we have a gate and it, that encumbers them from doing that. But we did, the language for bringing the plow through was omitted, and it cost our agency a lot of money this year, and I was wondering if, if you would consider putting that language back in and bringing the plow back through when you pick up the garbage, or on plow days. And Jim Cole and I live right in the neighborhood, and we'd be more than happy to open up the gate so that the driver doesn't have to get out. And also, I would like to remind you and the police department that if you're in that side of the neighborhood, that, now they all have keys now, that the clubhouse is open to them if they need to get warm or use the facilities, that it's available to them, and I'd like to welcome you all to come over and visit us. So, that's all I have to say, and let me know.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Sharp young man over here.
Thank you for having me back, Joel Sierra, County Legislature, District 20, City of Middletown. Let me formally congratulate all of you on your elections and your re-elections. I know you all worked hard, so I wanted to congratulate you all, I see you all in person. As you all know, I saw most of you at the distribution for the test kits. The city gave out over 5,000 test kits with the help of the county, and most of you were out there on that frigid day, you know, handing out test kits, so thank you for that. The Heritage Trail is coming along nicely, they were up there today putting in the rest of the fencing and the rails for the bridges, so there should be a ribbon cutting coming down the pipeline soon, you'll all be notified. And the big news is the sales tax revenue. The projections came in way higher than they initially projected, so it looks like the tourism and the economic development throughout the county is, is working. And your share should be substantially larger than last year's share, so that's great news. We don't have accurate numbers just yet, finance is working on the, on the figures, but the City of Middletown will get those figures coming down very shortly. And that being said, I wish you all a Happy New Year, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Eileen, do we have anybody online?
We do not.
Thank you. Remarks to the mayor?
Good evening, I want to thank Legislature Sierra for his presentation, and also if he could take back to the county that the sales tax agreement, I think, is expiring soon, and we would like to, I'm sure the other two cities would also look forward to the renewal of the contract for distribution throughout the three, throughout the county. As you know, the towns and villages do share in that distribution also, and we would like the new contract to reflect the change in population, the new census data. As you know, Middletown has now become the most populous city in the, in the county, so the distribution formula should change in our favor. Historically, for the past 20, 30 years, it's been in favor of Newburgh, but our census folks did a great job through economic development. Caitlin McNamara headed that effort, working with different not-for-profit groups, and we were able to count, get a more accurate count than we have had in the past, and so we, that, that number should change substantially in the next, over the next five years with the new contract. Also, Mr. Sierra mentioned the COVID tests and giveaways at the, we did it at F A T N College, the, we want to thank them for their hospitality, and we did do about 2,500 tests handed out that day. The lines were all the way down to Mont Higgin, the salt garage, and I want to thank Chief O'Wancho and his staff for doing a great job controlling traffic, and also, along with all of you folks who came and assisted, it was like one of the cold days of the year, and we were out there for probably about an hour and a half, two hours, but it was well worth it with the, the thanks that we received from so many of the people in that neighborhood, or not in the neighborhood, throughout the county who came, wasn't only for Middletown residents. The Legislature Sierra is correct that those were the kits that were donated, not donated, but given to us by the county from the state stock. Coming up, we will be doing additional test kit giveaways, or handouts. This past week, we did, along with Alderman Tobin and myself, Chief O'Wancho and Maria Bruni, we were down at Southeast Towers, and that was well received, and whoever we missed that night, we did find, had the police did a delivery the next day to each unit. The following day, we did Middlecrest Crossing, they requested that they do the distribution. Apparently, they prefer not to have a lot of people into their buildings, and there was twice as many units, so we did, I think Alderman Tobin did, either showed up or was on his way there when I notified him, and Alderman Jean Francois, so, so we had two successful test kit giveaways then. This Thursday, we're planning on doing Summit Field Apartments, and we will be following up with the other Housing Authority project, which is David Moore, probably early next week, and these are not for the public, these are just giveaways for the, for the residents of the Middletown Housing Authority. We anticipate having additional kits after that, and we will look to do a more local distribution. We did some at the Warming Center, so we're trying to identify certain areas where people who don't have the means can get a test kit. We also have the COVID test site that was set up at the former Mount Carmel Church, the upper floor of the senior center, that's been going well, that will continue as long as demand continues. I spoke with the people who were in charge of it two days ago, and they told me it was going quite well. More and more of these operations are opening up throughout the county, so we do expect demand to dwindle at some point, and especially with Omicron, you know, the virus itself not being, with the numbers dropping, usually the testing requests drop. So, we don't have a definitive date on when that will go to, but our agreement is basically a week-to-week agreement, but as far as I'm concerned, if, if the person running the, the, if COVID, the urgent testing operation, as long as they want to stay, as long as it's being effective, it's really only taken up some space for us and, and should remain in operation. We want to talk to people about sidewalks. Alderman Massey and Council President Rodriguez and I met before the meeting with the Commissioner, and he has informed us that city crews are out doing sidewalks. Remember to the public, this is just a notice again to the public, we are not sending out warning letters anymore. We will try our best to maybe give you a phone call, but if it snowed two days ago, three days ago, and your sidewalk is not done, the city may show up and just do your sidewalk. We are looking at strategic areas first, intersections, areas around schools, downtown, you know, where there's heavy foot traffic. So, the idea is you have 24 hours by code to get your sidewalk shoveled, if not, then we will have to do it for you, and the cost is substantial. It could be up to, for a large commercial property, it could be in the area of $400 to $500, and for a smaller property, the $100 to $200. So, it makes sense to pay the neighborhood kid or have a company come and do your, do your sidewalk after the storm. Don't do it before because, or during, because you will get snowed back in, the plows do come by again, and that's one of the main complaints we get, is I paid someone to shovel my driveway, and then the plows came by and plowed it in. So, please be patient, but also, you have to, at the same time, get it done within 24 hours after the end of the snowstorm, especially if you're in a high-traffic area. One new bit of information is you have a resolution tonight regarding the shifting of $25,000, or authorizing the expenditure of $25,000 for the, to monitor the operation or the proposal for the E I S, the environmental study, on the Dulcet Town Corridor between Dulcet Avenue and I believe goes all the way up to the traffic circle, there's.
Janong.
Janong, Jacob?
Yes.
All the way, all the way up to Janong. There are several pending applications at the Wayweyanda Planning Board. They include warehouses and a transfer station. These, if you haven't seen it, there is a petition online signed by well over 1,000 people that raises some issues, whether they're all accurate or not, I don't know, but shortly, near the end of last week, or the middle of last week, we did receive the environmental impact statement from the town of Wayweyanda regarding the environmental impact statement that is being done on that, on that stretch of road. It contains, as I said, not only warehousing, but a proposed garbage transfer station, and we're, you know, what is our interest? Obviously, our interest is that the town of Wayweyanda Planning Board follow their environmental procedures correctly, and our consultants are an environmental group out of engineering firm that we've used in the past, C D M, and we're asking them to review every, all the work of the Wayweyanda Planning Board. We have not only air concerns, but traffic concerns, impact on intersections such as 17M and Dulcet Town Road, as you know, that's a pretty bad intersection now, crossing over the Mont Higgin Brook is a two-lane road, how do we, how do we best protect Middletown's interests and raise the issues and concerns that should be raised through the environmental process? So, we're authorizing or requesting that money tonight so that we can begin the process this, now that we've been served with the preliminary documents, and, and we'll keep you abreast of the thoughts of our engineers as we move forward. You know, we, you know, we've been this route before with neighboring communities, and they've been this way with us also, so it's a, basically a standard operating procedure, what we should do is to protect and raise questions about what's in our interest as Middletown residents and Middletown, Middletown businesses on the end of town. The last part is, we are now ready to bid the, the ice skating rink for the pavilion area in the back here. After many meetings with John Bianchi and Maria, as you know, Maria has been working on this for probably well over a year, year and a half, Mrs. Mcnamany, I believe, has come and has basically supported the concept from the public, but we make sure that we, our original thoughts were going to be in Festival Square and do it like a downsized type of facility, but we've expanded it now to a larger facility with real ice rather than artificial ice. It is fundable under the American Recovery Funds, the ARPA funds, it is an eligible expenditure. We anticipate the, the price that we have here is about $80,000 to $100,000, that should be completely installed once we bid the project. It is the type of facility that can be put up in October, November, and stay with us through March probably. It'll keep the ice frozen at 50 degrees. We're looking at possibly purchasing a small, a little bit larger refrigeration system in case we want to expand it into another area. It is portable, but has to be on level ground, so we'll have different options as we move forward if we purchase the larger unit. So, the larger unit might be a little bit more than, will be a little bit more than the 80 to 100, but we'll have, we'll give you all that discussions, we'll probably put both out the bid, and then we'll make a decision when that comes. Year one, the D P W, I mean, the Parks and Rec Crew will put it up with the assistance of the company, it doesn't look like it's too complicated, at least to me, it doesn't look like it's too complicated. And if it's not too complicated to me, it's not too complicated to the Parks Department. So, that's all I have at this point. I'll be changing the state of the city from the 15th of February probably to the 22nd, and that's due to, we're going to have some technology difficulties on the 15th because Eileen will be on vacation. So, rather than have Eileen change her vacation and present half of the state of the city, we do a lot of visual stuff in it, Eileen's the one who is trained in that area, and we don't want to screw it up, so it will be, require you guys coming in for one other night around the 22nd, 23rd. The date's flexible, so if there's a, if there's a date better for all of us, I don't want to get back into that 7 o'clock, 7:30 meeting night argument where Mr. Massey gets angry about setting a time and, and then having one person have a problem with a date and then causing a big, big stink about it, so.
Big stink, big stink, thank you.
So, that's all I have, any questions?
Any question for the mayor? Jerry? Can't let it go, can you? Jerry?
Do we have any update on the O N W?
Yes. O N W, we received the, the funding letter from the Home Committee, the Orange County Home Committee. We have the proposed contract from the, from the engineer, Fusco, and I think it's called C N S, Jacob?
Yes.
C N S Engineering, they're out of Syracuse. They've been in the building already, they've started their, they went in with drones and are doing the evaluation of the building, so we don't get behind, and Jacob can give you an update on us when we will formally sign the contract with the engineers, but all of the money is in place. We did not get the one $750,000 grant from the consolidated funding application, but we will once again pursue that as we move forward and possibly have other options for funding on that. But we're in the area, as you know, we have the $3 million from ARPA, we could also shift more ARPA funds into that if we like. We have 4.1 million from New York State C D B G, 800,000 from Home, and 2 million through a semi-women Gunther that was put into last year's state budget. And I think, Maria, that all the funding sources at this point that are confirmed, correct? Yeah. And so, we're, and of course, the city has a commitment of about a million, possibly in kind, depending how the bids come in. So, we should be, and everyone knows the importance of meeting the timeline on that, as soon as Jacob signs the contract, or we sign the contract with the engineer, I'm sure it'll start moving very quickly, but it is under operation now.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reports of department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone, I just want to update you on, we're starting to work on our summer programs, and also, we finalize and are moving forward with a lineup for the Paramount, there's 12 shows that the city is promoting and producing this year, so they're all out for sale and, and ready to go, so we're looking forward to a great season, and like I said, we're preparing for summer concerts, fireworks, and all that stuff, so stay tuned, I'll update you as we get closer to that, and of course, you know, with, so, with safety guidelines still in place with COVID, and we're, you know, keeping that in mind, and, and everything's been working pretty well, especially over at the Paramount with movies and some of the shows we did, we were able to produce all that safely and moving forward, doing the same. That's all I have.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Police chief?
Good evening. A few things for you this evening. First, I'd like to recognize Officer Deb Rivera, or Officer Deb Summer, as some knew her. She just retired from the department this past Friday after 20 years of dedicated service, so I just want to publicly recognize her and acknowledge her 20 years of service. Additionally, I'd like to bring some recognition to some recent promotions that the department made through the Police Commission. Promoted to Lieutenant were is Eric Hargit, Patrick Cunningham, and George Valentin, and promoted to Sergeant is Kristen Beebe, Scott Gallagher, and just a few months prior to that was Charles Patron and Jordan McInerney. And the Commission also just recently hired three additional police officers that will start their career with us on February 14th. So, not only like to recognize them, but thank the Commission for the support in that. Also, I'd like to bring to the attention and put it out to the public, we will be giving a police exam this year. Mr. Massey, through civil service, has organized this and put together a date, it'll be April 9th of 2022, so it's just around the corner. We're excited to have that done earlier than we expected. We've already put some feelers out for some outreach, reached out some of our, to some of our partners, some of the schools, some of our community partners, we would like to do as much outreach as we can in this period of time, to do the best possible, to give the best possible opportunities for members of our community to take the test. That is one of our biggest goals, is to get people from our community to take the exam and join our force. Just some quick, quick requirements for the exam is you have to have 30 college credits to take the exam, you have to be 19 years of age, at the time of appointment, you'd have to have at least 60 college credits, or a combination of college and military, or college and prior police experience, and you'd have to be hired before your 35th birthday. These requirements, in addition to some other requirements, will come out when the application should be out within like a week or so, and will be out in the community. I'll put together a recruiting team and hitting some of our local establishments and some of our neighboring colleges to try to recruit as many people as we can. Additionally, overnight parking, we're still out there, still seeing a lot of violators, this is especially important with the snow. The last thing we want to do is tow cars, but it seems like every snowstorm, we are towing cars, so please, members of the community, do your due diligence, move your cars off the streets during snowstorms, and especially overnight. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
D P W Commissioner?
Good evening, all. We'll start off with our reservoirs, Alderman Massey, we're at 96% full. Last year, 2021, we had 60 inches of rain over, throughout the year, which is a huge amount of water, much higher than our average annual precipitation. And, you know, if we had more reservoirs, or if we had more volume in our reservoirs, our safe yield would have been increased significantly, especially with this amount of rain. But we're doing very well, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, the amount of rain, we had like 60 inches, it was much higher, it was really wet year, not much snow, but now that we have the snow, and to follow with what the chief was saying, please keep your cars off the road to allow us to safely plow the streets and keep them clean and safe for the public, for you, for the emergency services, fire department, police department, ambulances, and also, please remember, try to keep your, the fire hydrants shoveled and clear around, in your neighborhood. You know, just if you see something piled up in there, please go clean it so that if the fire, should the fire department is needed, then come out, they'll see that the fire hydrant is readily available for them, they don't have to go break up the ice or, or do anything in there, they'll just tap it and, and try to protect the neighborhood or the house that is involved in the event. Shoveling your curb, your sidewalks, extremely important, again, when it snows, it snows throughout the city, and we have, I keep repeating this number, 230 lane miles of road, lane miles of road, so that means that's equivalent wherever we have sidewalks to sidewalks. So, even if we had an army of people with shovels readily available, we can cover all the city, and so, we have to take care of our own city, own properties, after that, we're going to go to the private properties who did not, who did not comply with the ordinance and clear their sidewalks within 24 hours. If you don't clear your sidewalk, obviously, you are forcing the residents, or whoever the pedestrians, to walk in the street, and it is dangerous, it's slippery, it's snowy, it's icy, so please work with us, and like the mayor was saying, is, you're going to be, it's, it's expensive for us to come out and do it, and we've been doing it, and we have been using the part-timers, we've been using whenever we have men available from the street department, we've been using parks and recreation whenever they're available to shovel private sidewalks. We're focusing, like the mayor stated, on intersections by the schools, by the heavily tr- walked areas in there, in order to make it safe, so help us out, please, and check your sidewalk, you're required to clear it within 24 hours after the last snowfall, after the last snow falls on the ground, so please work with us and make sure you do that, again, parking off, off the road. Regarding O N W, the mayor is absolutely correct, the, the engineering work has started, it's moving along, the only thing we did not do is, we did not sign the engineering contract with Fusco and C N S, because we've been going back and forth to try to establish some benchmarks, and there are standards in the industry that we use for the charges. So, we shook hands in the mayor's office, that we agreed that we're going to live with the number, whatever the standard industry is for engineering design, so they submitted to us a package relying on giving us some numbers to review, which we are reviewing, I'll be reviewing that hopefully this week, and once we agree on the numbers, then it's up to you guys to accept the contract and the mayor to sign it. So, that's where we are, you had an update on the, that's all, I'm just going to stay with the, with the snow and ice, please, and help us out, it's going to be, probably it's going to be dangerous this Thursday night and Friday, so please try to minimize the travel as much as you can, we understand people have to travel and they have to go places, we understand that, we appreciate that, we're going to make, try to make the roads as safe as possible. Do you have any questions, Alderman?
Alderman Green?
Thank you, yeah, Commissioner, while you're speaking about the snow and ice, I noticed a lot of people, this last time, were snow blowing into the street, or pulling their cars out and cleaning them off in the street and just leaving it there, they shouldn't be doing that, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and people piloting the street and all that stuff, the police, if the police will see them, they will ticket them, and if we see them, we have to see them ourselves so that we can report them, we can be a witness, so we can sign the complaint. But I'm, I'm going to take this opportunity too, to thank our guys in there, I mean, they've done, they've done hours after hours after hours, they've done tremendous job, D P W guys, and, and with help from the Water Department, Sewer Department, and Parks and Recreation as well, in order to be able to cover the city, so I'm very grateful for them for the long hours, and they stay with it, and they, they don't go home until the job is done, and it's taxing on them, but they're doing it, and we very much, I very much appreciate that.
Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, quickly, Jacob, quite a few water main breaks, water departments had their hands full. Is it an unusual number, a lot this year, or is it?
You mean, this year, this year?
This year, yeah.
Yeah, not, not, no, no, we're good, you'll see in the, in the mayor's report when he's, when he does the state of the city, last year was higher than the previous years, but we go from 30 to 15, back to 30, back to 15, and, and so on, so.
Okay, well, thank you to the Water Department, it's been a lot, it seems like, maybe it's just when you get the Nixle reports on them constantly. It seems like, maybe it's just when you get the NICSIL reports on them constantly.
Absolutely. And our guys, they never complain, you know, whether it is 20 below zero or whatever the condition is, they go out. Some of them, they were plowing because we need to use them for plowing as well. They stopped the plowing and they jump in and they repair the water, water main break or whatever it takes. So I'm very grateful for the water department, sewer department, all of them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
City Clerk.
Nothing this evening.
Any question? All right. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey.
Thank you. The chief brought up the fact that we'll be giving the police officer exam. We'll also, chief, be giving the bilingual police officer, and we want as many people as possible to get involved in it. As he said, the test will be given on April 9th, and it'll be at Maple Hill Elementary School. But you'll get that if you apply for it, you'll get it in a letter about a week, week and a half ahead of time, and it'll tell you to be there around 8 o'clock. The deadline to file that application is March 7th at noon. We won't accept anything after that. Now, the state hasn't put out the scopes yet. You can start filling out the application. And then, when we put out the announcement, there will be scopes on it, and it will tell you what the minimum qualification, so be sure you meet the minimum qualifications before you actually send in that $40 and the application. I'm hoping by the end of this week, the state will get back to us with the scopes and we'll put the announcement out as soon as possible. But you really don't have to wait to get it. You know that when the test is gonna be, you know what the deadline is, and we'll be repeating this and it'll be on our webpage. Now, there is one difference with this exam this year than we've ever had before. And it'll be on the application, or excuse me, on the announcement, but I want people to be clear with this. If you took the police officer or bilingual police officer exam this past September, anywhere in New York State, we did not give it, so obviously you didn't take a Middletown one, but if you took that exam anywhere in New York State, you can apply for our test. Submit the application, submit your $40. You will not be coming in to actually take the test. You will be given the score that you obtained in wherever, whatever municipality you took it in September. So it, like I said, it'll be on the announcement, but that's something that's, that hasn't been done before, and I want people to beware. Just because if you took it in September and you want to get on our list, all you have to do is apply, send in the $40, and we'll integrate that score into the final scores. Like I say, I'm hoping by the end of this week, the announcements will be on and you can actually complete the application and send it in. But you know the dates now, good luck, and please tell everyone, your friends, family, that we are giving the exam. We would like as many people to take it as possible, and good luck.
Alderman Witt.
Thank you very much. I just, I want to share something that the Recreation and Parks Department is doing. Obviously, I was not on the council last summer, but it was my understanding that we had serious staffing issues regarding lifeguards, which affected our ability to have our pools open. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that. But there is a save the date, the City of Middletown Recreation and Parks Department will be offering a, oh, I just lost it, I'm sorry, full certification Red Cross lifeguard class for free to anyone who will contract to work the summer of 2022 for the Recreation and Parks Department. It'll be Saturday, March 12th and Saturday, March 19th at Middletown High School. So for more registration, more information will follow, or you can call 346-4180. So that's certainly something to consider for people looking for summer employment. The second thing is, prior to me taking office, but after the election, I spoke with Alderman Massey about the idea of having ward meetings, constituent meetings for the first ward. And he had mentioned to me, was very supportive of the idea, had mentioned that he actually had started them many years ago, and they had, attendance had dwindled to the point where it wasn't worth really having them anymore. So we're going to give it another shot now, a few years later. And I've already spoken with Mr. McCormick, and I think we're, and Mr. Massey also recommended starting in March. So we're sort of waiting to see what the world looks like, but we'll, we'll get back to you with more details. So folks in the first ward, please consider joining us. I'd like to have them here. It's, it's, it's a good thing and it gives you a chance to, get a chance to know your neighbors a little bit, know us, and I did it for, for four years with Jerry, and it was, it was good. It wasn't just people showing up complaining. I mean, it was a lot of good discussion and, and people are entitled to complain, don't get me wrong. But it was, it was a very good atmosphere and it was very positive, and I'm looking forward to bringing that to the first ward. So thank you very much.
Alderman Green.
Thank you very much. Yes, speaking of ward meetings, Alderman Kleiner and I will be starting again in March. We decided with the, with the cold, the, the weather changes here and there and, as well as the current COVID numbers, you know, we'll, we'll skip February again. But if you do, anyone in our ward who has any concerns, please feel free to reach out to us, we're always available for you. There is a forecast for some snow and ice, so again, please just be cautious when driving in that and clear your sidewalks, don't throw anything into the street. We, we went through all that with DPW Commissioner, but it's important to reiterate because it is a safety concern for everyone. And also, lastly, it is the Lunar New Year, and I know we have a few people who celebrate the Chinese New Year in the city now, and just a happy Lunar New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Yeah, that was on the top of my list was Happy Lunar New Year. It's the year 4720 in the Lunar New Year calendar, so. We do have a substantial Asian community and that, we wish them a happy, happy celebration and a happy year. And tomorrow is Groundhog Day, again. Wish you a happy Groundhog Day. I do believe there'll be shadows, and I don't need the Groundhog to tell me we've got a lot more winter left, so. COVID numbers, I think we're up to 886,000 deaths this year, so far. I mean, you know, total in the country, not this year, but since the beginning of the pandemic, so. It's. I'm hearing some competition. So it's something we still take very seriously, you know, when you're still having 2,000 deaths a day, it's, it's serious and, and hopefully, we're getting smarter about it, most of us. So I do have a lot of updates to ask about. You know, the, well, it just, I did ask about the ONW. We'll have updates, I'm sure, on the courthouse and the psych center and the farmer's market, Heritage Trail. We mentioned on Amy's Kitchen and what's going on with, I know the Emporium is closing. And then, we have a proposal Wednesday, be tomorrow at the planning board for two new hotels on right off of James Kelly Way, so talking about that intersection where the Donna Weyon is looking to put in for warehouses and a transfer station, and God knows what else, we'll be finding out, but I'm glad we're gonna have help in understanding just what they are doing, so. Also be asking about, again, Davich Park and some safe walking areas along Frank Shorter Way. And we'll be looking forward to the mayor's state of the city, and please tune in for that. Thank you.
Alderman Ray Kasun.
Good evening. Ward meetings, we, our third ward had our meeting last week, and it's, Jacob made a good point about, and the chief about overnight parking and parking during snow because it was one of our main issues of the evening from residents, was their frustration with how that affects the quality of the street with the plows. There were some issues where a car was parked, the plows had to go around. Now that person in front of their home, it's a disaster and they, they have to clean it up themselves. So just, please, be respectful of the men and women who work to keep our streets clean and safe and do the right thing and move those cars. If you want your reminder, sign up for NICSIL and you'll get your text message to remind you to get your car off the street because we're having snow. So here's your reminder for this weekend, be prepared to not be on the street. That being said, DPW, you do an amazing job of keeping our streets clear because the minute you leave the City of Middletown, it's quite obvious that you have left the City of Middletown. So just a big shout out to all those guys and the hard work that they do. And that's all I have tonight, thanks.
Alderman Johnson.
Thank you so much. Mayor, I'm not sure how many cubic centimeters constitute a big stink, but as soon as I find out, I'll get back to you. Thank you. DPW, I think Middletown residents, as my colleague has said, we are routinely treated to, to pavement when we wake up every morning, so thank you all for doing that. Ice rank moving along, congratulations, we appreciate it. If it comes with a Zamboni, I volunteer to drive it, thank you. ONW, moving forward, congratulations to all. Heritage Trail, ribbon cutting, from your mouth to God's ears, legislator. It'll be an exciting day when it comes. Dulcent Town, Mr. Mayor, thanks for being ahead of the curve on that. And lastly, most of you, if not all, have been contacted by a resident of the third ward who is asking us to consider an acknowledgement of a former director of Senior Center/Mulberry House. I spoke with her yesterday. I have been led to believe this will fall under the auspices of my committee, and I will schedule that conversation in a timely manner. Thank you.
Alderman Jean-François.
Yes, thank you, good evening. I have to say, the city invests a lot of money in all the capital project that we have going on. And I had the opportunity and with, to visit all the capital project with the Commissioner of DPW. And I really have to say, I got, I'm very impressed with the progress that's taking place, and it's a job well done, you know, kudo to all the Department of DPW and you, Commissioner. And, and, and we see where our money is going because we, you know, we spent a lot of money and you guys are doing a great job. And also, secondly, Chairman Joe Sierra, it's good to see you because every time you come here, you always have good news for us. Thank you for the report on the cell tax and also the Heritage Trails coming to fruition. And, and again, thank you for all you do, appreciate that. DPW, job well done. You know, street department, sanitation department, I mean, it's one thing with the City of Middletown. When you get up in the morning after a snowstorm, you guarantee the street is gonna be clean. And that's what we've been doing for many, many years. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin.
Not much left after everybody, but just kidding. I'd also like to thank legislator Sierra for the good news. I can't wait to get on the rail trail. It seems like construction used to halt in the winter, but now we're actually working through it, so that's, that's good news. You know, I'd also thank the mayor, the testing's a very important part of combating COVID, and I'm glad that they become more affordable and more accessible. And Alderman Kleiner, I thought you mentioned, first day of Black History Month is today, actually, and I think Monhegan had a trivia night. And that's it, I just look forward to the state of the city and hearing about what's going on and for the future of the city. Can't wait, thanks.
New business.
Good evening, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing non-contributory health plans for non-union City of Middletown officers and employees.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, accepting a $45,000 grant for the Middletown Police Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, authorizing the treasurer to transfer $128,563.78 from ARPA funds into the special items COVID costs.
Resolution by Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez. Resolution carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a workers' compensation settlement.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner to authorize the city clerk's office to issue hunting and fishing licenses.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Kasun, authorizing the treasurer to transfer $1,331.12 in the capital improvement budget for the East Main to Orchard Pathway project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray Kasun, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing the treasurer, the treasurer to transfer $4,300 in capital improvement budget for the green infrastructure project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kasun. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, declaring two DPW vehicles as surplus.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Jacob, this is the garbage truck?
Yes, that's the garbage truck and the excavator, the wheel excavator, both of which have been replaced with the new vehicles.
Thank you.
Rope.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Kasun.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing the treasurer to transfer five thousand dollars from ARPA funds into DPW contractual services.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, authorizing the treasurer to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund for engineering work by CDM Smith.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, creating a paralegal position to be shared between the Office of Corporation Counsel, the Police Department, and the Department of Public Works.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, establishing standard workdays for elected and appointed officials.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution carries.
Local laws?
Local law number one of two thousand twenty-two, a local law changing the notification requirements for special meetings of the common council sponsored by Alderman Johnson.
I have a second, you do. Alderman Massey, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Alderman, uh, Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Local law number one passes. Local law number two of two thousand twenty-two, sponsored by Alderman Johnson, allowing delinquent water and sewer charges to be re-levered into real property tax bills.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts be audited, the claims be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized social warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Cassoon, roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries.
Move for adjournment?
No move.